We're rolling. We are rolling.
This is a real, real thing. Real, real, real thing.
None of you have the balls to stop, stop this.
I've, I've, I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today.
We're in the Wedge neighborhood right now, 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 right now.
Okay. It's another episode of the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm joined today making their return on the Wedge Live Podcast, Jason Garcia. Hello, Jason.
Thank you for having me back. It's always a pleasure to see you, John.
Remind, remind people what neighborhood you're coming from.
Uh, I am live from Lyndale.
And how many doses of the vaccine have you had?
I've had two. So in another 13 days, I will be what they call fully vaccinated.
Okay. Congratulations. I managed to snag, I managed to snag an appointment yesterday at a cub. I have to bus out to St. Louis Park.
Oh, nice. That's a kind of a fancy cub.
And our, our second guest is Taylor, who you may know from Twitter. She does good tweets. T A Y L R. Taylor, welcome to, welcome to the show.
Hello. Thanks for having me.
And what neighborhood are you coming to us from?
Loring Park.
And how many doses of vaccine have you had?
None. Not yet.
Are you, are you searching vigorously for an appointment?
No. I've signed up on websites, but I'm not hunting it down.
Yeah, that's, that was kind of my attitude. And then somebody posted a link last night after midnight and I just started clicking and it took me like 20, 30 minutes and I finally got one.
I should try.
Thanks. Thanks both of you for coming on. Uh, this is either going to be a really terrible episode or it could be really great. You both, you both know, you both know what the concept of today's show is. And uh, yeah, let's see. I'm, I'm working off a little bit of an outline here. Okay. Let's start with Taylor. What are you known for? And why, why should we trust your political analysis here today?
Um, I really don't know what I would be known for. I make meme, I make a lot of memes lately. Um, I used to tweet about scooters a lot. I complain about sidewalks, you know?
Yeah. If I could interject, I would like to, to say, uh, Taylor is known as, uh, her Royal Highness, the Duchess of Loring Park. She is a graduate of the Purport Arts High, which explains her talent with the memes. She is a lifelong resident of Minneapolis, a scooter enthusiast slash advocate, and she is also the scourge of 311 for reporting all of the sidewalks that don't get plowed or cleared by the city.
That's true. Taylor, you've undersold your qualifications, I think. Those are all really good.
Yeah, I should have done better. I tried to make a list, but much better.
You've got a Nick Core that lit on the wall behind you?
Yes. Thank you for noticing. I did not have anything on the wall and this came in the mail the other day. So there's my support.
Splash, splash of color. One thing that I never forget about Taylor is, maybe I've seen it on Instagram, is the picture of you with Norm Coleman?
Yes.
So, yeah, on YouTube, we're going to put a picture of that on the screen as we talk about it. So give us the backstory for that.
So I had a crush on him when I was, I don't know, 12 through 14, maybe. I don't know. Like I, I, I tried to leave politics aside. I just, I thought he was attractive. I don't know. And so I met him at the state fair a couple of times. I met him the year prior and that picture was not as fun because I just looked pretty normal. But this time I met him at the state fair and like I had really short hair and I just looked out of it and my friend was like a Juggalo. So she had an ICP shirt on. And we were just like completely unlikely to be the people going up to him and asking him for a picture. But yeah, I mean, I, I sent him like a birthday card once and got like a handwritten letter. So just really ill advised.
So, so you knew that you disagreed with his politics? You had politics at 12?
Yeah.
And you like looked, you looked beyond that and still found him to be an attractive man?
Yes. I regret that though.
Not anymore. You don't, you don't feel that way anymore?
No, no, I don't understand it anymore. It's just a very weird time.
Okay. That was a good story.
John, have you ever had any political crushes? Like perhaps when you were young?
Political crushes? I don't think so. I don't, I don't tend to look at political figures as, uh, in a romantic way. Do you, Jason? I know, I know you once impersonated Walter Mondale.
Yeah, that wasn't like, uh, you know, I was 10, so it wasn't really, uh, any sort of romantic thing that, that was happening there.
You kind of had like a desire deep, deep inside to be Walter Mondale though.
Uh, I had a desire, not even very deep inside to see Ronald Reagan not win reelection. You know, but I, I don't think I've ever really had a crush on a political figure. When I was in college, we used to joke that one of my roommates had a crush on Hillary Clinton. But you know, that was when her husband was the president. So it's kind of a different time, different era. So.
And, uh, Taylor and Jason, you've been friends for years?
Yeah.
Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Yeah, just over two years, I think.
And have never met?
That's correct. This is literally the first time that we're hearing each other's voices.
Virtual meeting. Yep.
Yeah, we, we joined forces randomly on Twitter one day to, um, figure out how we could grift the city. Taylor was going to initially, uh, do sort of an Elizabeth Holmes kind of thing. Um, you know, she had her lipstick and turtleneck all picked out and everything. Then we settled on running Mike Mullen, formerly of City Pages for the BET.
I remember that.
Yeah. Um, we created the much beloved mascot, the bore of estimate and taxation.
That's right.
And yeah, and our friend Bree Dallager was also heavily involved. And yeah, from all of that, Taylor and I became pretty, pretty close friends in a, an online setting. And now we're here talking to Wedgie himself and ready to, to do some endorsements.
Although we have, we have dropped the, uh, talk radio nicknames. We are no longer wedgie and the meatjacker. That was just for the first episode.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's disappointing.
Taylor, Taylor, have you been listening to the podcast?
Yeah, I've listened, I listened to the first couple of episodes, but they've been coming out at a really fast pace. So.
You've got a lot to catch up on. Any pointers? Am I doing anything wrong?
Well, I mean, you dropped the, the talk radio nicknames. That's kind of.
Oh, you were into that?
I really liked those nicknames. They were good.
I know you've been, uh, you've been looking into historic Minneapolis meatjackings. You did a little research.
Yes, historic and in the last decade, a lot of meatjackings.
Do you have anything to report?
Yes, there was one, okay, there was one that I thought was the most interesting. This was 2012 and it was on the 6100 block of Nicollet. So this woman was in an apartment, um, and she went on vacation and for some reason left her doors unlocked for a couple of weeks. She came back and she found out that someone had gotten in through probably her window though, and they stole an unknown amount of meat from her freezer.
Imagine how having so much meat that you don't know how much of it was stolen.
That was it. Nothing else was stolen.
That's privilege.
Uh, and then, so they actually got, for some reason, they got the police spokesman at the time to comment on this. Uh, and he told them that the department does not keep track of meat related thefts.
Oh, that's amazing. MPD doesn't even track meat thefts as a category.
Could have helped out for the meatjacker.
So we don't know if meatjackings are up or down because they don't have a category for it.
It could be the same guy.
Yeah. Tony Webster can't do an, a FOIA request for us. There's, there's no data.
It's an oversight. You'd think they would have fixed that, but I, I mean, I'm looking at crime reports constantly. I haven't seen, I mean, I see violent crime as a category, robberies. I know they've recently started tracking carjackings. You don't see meatjackings on the list.
Well, there was also, it popped up on one of those crime accounts. Um, this was really close to the other one. This is 5900 block of Nicollet. A guy, uh, dressed as Santa Claus stuffing steak down his pants. And they think he may be on drugs, but he left the store. So that was another meat theft just from this past November.
Yeah, that was, I saw that. You sent me the screenshot for that one. That was troubling.
Yes. Yep. And then there was the other one that was like a $1.5 million meat theft.
$1.5 million?
I think he stole from a company basically. So that's how it got so high.
That would be heavy. That's a lot of meat.
It was an inside job at the plant. They were selling cuttings.
What's the phrase? What are the, what do they call the low rent meats on Nextdoor?
The less desirable meats.
Yeah.
Or the, the wittier meats, I think is.
That was your phrase. That was your phrase for it.
Yeah.
Nobody's going to know what we're talking about because they didn't watch the first episode or listen.
They should go back.
I, I'd like to see the data on that too, John.
On, uh, on what?
On how many people have, uh, checked out the, the first episode of your podcast here.
Are you alleging that we've only gone down the hill since you were last on?
I, I mean, the data will tell the story here.
Okay. I have the data and I'm not releasing it. So, so aside from meatjackings, what, what would you both say were your formative experiences in Minneapolis that shaped how you, how you view politics today? Let's start with Taylor.
Oh God. Um, I grew up pretty much, my mom was really political, obviously, because I was, you know, ashamed for having a Norm Coleman crush. She worked for the state and so she was in a union and some of my like younger memories are basically going to like picket lines with her or very union things that like only now am I realizing that's what was going on. That's why we were at the picket line. Um, so that was pretty much a big one when I was younger. Um, and then the war in Iraq too. That was another kind of protest moment that.
Any, anything particularly local or particularly ridiculous?
Ridiculous. Um.
You could say Jacob Frye on the zip line across the Mississippi River if you want.
Yeah, that's a big one. I honestly didn't start following like local, local politics until I started following Wedge Live. So.
Okay. I'll take credit for that.
I guess that's a formative. I don't know. Formative experience.
You and Jason are bullying the mayor today because of Wedge Live. Although I, I can't endorse a lot of the things that you guys say. Just extreme, extreme rhetoric.
I mean, we're, we're just out here making the connections between Jacob Frye's actions and really how that reflects upon him and the rest of the city. And surely some people won't like that, but.
Yeah, his campaign manager actually came on Twitter to scold Twitter about how, how irrelevant they are. You remember that?
Yeah. I mean, there, there's nothing that will tell people that they're irrelevant, like having.
Spending, spending all morning replying to their tweets.
Yes, exactly. I mean, it's, it's always wonderful when I'll hear something back from Jacob saying that like, somebody told him that I posted something that was incorrect or, you know, checking my Instagram stories and seeing that he's looked at all of them. To see the ridiculous things that we've made fun of him for. Taylor has a lot of luck with that, actually.
Yeah, he actually views whatever ridiculous thing I take him in. It's just like within hour, like the other time I tagged him in some picture and he viewed it like within the hour. So it's just like, he just can't help himself. Like you tag him in something and he will look at it.
I think he replied to someone's story. Somebody I know said that he replied to their unflattering Instagram story.
I wish, I wish he'd reply to me.
Jason, I think you're dodging the question. Your formative political experience.
Minneapolis?
Minneapolis. None of the small town bullshit.
I mean, Minneapolis really feels like some small town bullshit sometimes. Um, I think, you know, the, the first political memory of, you know, that I have after moving to Minneapolis was, you know, seeing Jesse Ventura running for governor. But that, you know, affected a lot of people statewide. Um, but I think, you know, the war in Iraq, um, taking part in some protests and marches downtown and things like that, that was a big thing. I've always been kind of interested as far as like, um, education policy and, you know, kind of paying attention to what's going on at the school board and things like that. Um, you know, and there's obviously seeing a lot of the difficulty that the school, school board has had with funding and things like that. Having, you know, a child who, who spent part of his school career at, um, Minneapolis public schools, that was always kind of a big thing. But I think really when I became more active locally was during the occupation of the fifth precinct.
Fourth precinct, you mean the fourth precinct?
Fourth precinct, sorry. Um, you know, a lot of my friends were there and were really on the ground and involved. Um, I have a great picture that I took kind of over Chief Rondo's shoulder, um, the first night or afternoon that people were sitting in the entryway to the fourth. That, you know, some of the amazing, wonderful people that I know were really active there. And I think that has really brought a lot of activism and a lot of that spirit out in people that I know. So it's been really exciting to see and kind of get more involved one-on-one.
Okay. I have an answer to this question. Do you, you guys want to hear my answer?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it Carol Becker?
No, it's a little bit before then. So I started attending Neighborhood Association meetings in 2014. And it's, it's a nasty environment. It's shocking. Uh, yeah. So that's my answer.
Tell us what shocked you the most when you first started going.
So it's a, like probably your neighborhoods. It's vast majority renter. And yet the, the tone of the meetings is very anti-renter or was, it was when I was going to the meetings in 2014. And just like, this is not my neighborhood. It felt like, it felt very like, this is not my neighborhood and these people appear to have a lot of political power. I was very, wasn't as politically engaged as I am now, but, uh, that was shocking to me.
So this was before you were a lobbying firm? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Right. It's before, it's before I started the Wedge Live lobbying firm. You're making a reference to Carol Becker.
I am.
That's an inside, that's an inside joke, Jason.
I mean, I think a lot of people have seen it on Twitter now and realize that she has referenced you on e-democracy as being a, a business because you sell products and therefore, since you were also attempting to influence public opinion, that makes you a lobbying firm in her logic. So, you know, I, and she is still looking for your financial disclosures.
Right. Yeah. You stirred that up though. You promoted the podcast on her favorite local internet forum. You stirred that up intentionally. So you got what you wanted. You did. So if she sues me, if she sues me, you're paying for my, my legal expenses.
Oh, well, I mean, we can have another Wedge Live pledge drive.
Yeah.
There you go.
So, so you want to do some voicemails?
Yes.
Viewer, listener voicemails? Okay.
Yeah. I mean, with your format, it's hard to say if they're viewers or listeners or both.
Right. It's a TV show and a podcast. Let's, let's go. Here's the, here's the first voicemail. It's confusing. It's weird. Let's listen.
Please leave a message after the tone.
Hold my gum while we chew the fat.
Please leave a message after the tone.
Hold my gum while we chew the fat.
Think that's a reference to Lisa Goodman?
Uh, it has to be.
Yeah.
I think it's also like a podcast slogan, like hold my gum while we chew the fat, maybe?
Yeah. Well, you should take that one into consideration for a tagline.
And then the next one is very complimentary of me. So let's listen to that one.
Please leave a message after the tone.
Um, hey, is it, I don't know if this is how to reach John Edwards, but, uh, this is John Abraham. I'm just calling the number that you had on the wedge. The thing going underneath, uh, just wanted to say, register my definite approval. Uh, thought it was a really great interview, um, with the Ward one candidate and, uh, just really a great job. And, uh, very entertaining. So, uh, I don't know. I don't know if you, if you set this up to like take calls or whatnot, but, uh, I just thought I would try it and just say, uh, really great job. Really, uh, boy, like do we need this right now. So, uh, yeah, really looking forward to do more of it. Uh, so thanks and I'll see you on the tweet machine and whatnot. All right. Take care.
Yeah. Please, please leave more long voicemails complimenting my performance on previous episodes. And the, the number, the number will be scrolling on YouTube below the, the video.
That's great. I mean, I, I told you, this was bound to be a hit.
And, uh, here's the third voicemail.
Please leave a message after the tone.
From Wedge Live, this is Jen calling from Marcy Home. Longtime listener, first time caller. I was just wondering if you had any indication of Carol Becker trying to steal the meatjacker logo? Do you think that's something she's going to go after as far as intellectual property? I'll hang up and take my call off here. Thank you.
Okay. So that, that one's a question. So I think we have to answer that question.
Yeah.
Does anyone, anyone have any thoughts?
I would like to be the first to say that I hope that at some point Carol manages to steal some intellect, but nobody's property.
Oh, okay. Just, all right. Taylor?
Wow. I, I guess we have to register this as a trademark. We have to get ahead of this because this is something she would do.
Or, or the name of a competing podcast featuring Jason Garcia.
Oh.
Yeah.
Minneapolis meatjacking.
Minneapolis meatjacker.
Yeah. Uh, maybe Taylor and I will have a spinoff so that we can make sure we lock down that, uh,
That trademark.
Trademark.
And we can cross promote. I can appear on your podcast. You appear on my podcast and we double, double our audience.
You have to be wedgie though, when you're on our spinoff podcast.
Yeah, we'll still be Taylor and Jason, but you'll be the wedgie.
I will consent to that. I'll, I'll appear monthly on your podcast.
Okay.
Excellent.
So I think we're at the point where we need to do what we really came here to do today, which, which is endorsements, right? All three of us are going to have endorsements. I don't endorse your endorsements. You don't endorse my endorsements. These are our own endorsements.
That's correct. We, we don't speak for the, the Wedge Live Podcast. We speak for ourselves.
I, I speak for the podcast, but neither of you do.
No.
Wow. What a power play.
And the, the reason we're doing it is Tom Hoke released a slate of candidates. It was really bad. It was really disappointing list, but it was exactly what you would expect. These are the people you would expect Tom Hoke to support.
Yeah. He showed zero imagination in this list. It's really, who would be best for me as Tom Hoke?
Right. Yeah. And, and his friends around the lakes.
Right.
And so, and so the three of us got to talking. Why shouldn't we get to do our own slates?
That's right. There's three of us and only one of him. So it just, it's fair that we get to both do endorsements and anti endorsements.
So we're, we're trying to counteract Tom Hoke.
Yes.
So before we get into the endorsements, let's run through what our top issues are.
All right.
Ja- Jason, you want to start?
Sure. Um, you know, I think after the past year, year and a half, that it's clear that the 2021 elections are going to be a referendum on the Jacob Frye administration. The core issues are things that he made central to his last campaign and then really kind of fumbled and botched over the last year or so. You know, police violence and community safety. He talked a lot about how he was going to have a much better relationship with the police and hold them accountable because he was going to be, you know, their one boss. And clearly that's not happening. I had many discussions with him about unhoused citizens and affordable housing and things like that. And he really kind of, you know, will hide behind channeling money to, um, parts of the city budget. But as a mayor, he really has not done anything to address those issues. And I think to me personally, those are really significant.
And I have some sound for that.
I think it goes without saying, but you know, we've had a massive uptick in violent crime, specifically shootings, uh, and some of the worst police community relations in a long time. Uh, and that's the mayor's job, you know, the, the police report exclusively to the chief and the chief reports exclusively to the mayor. And, uh, you know, that's how it works.
That's how it works, Jason. That's, that's the mayor, before he was mayor in 2017, running against Betsy Hodges. Saying this, this is the mayor's job.
It's exactly what he asked for. And then he underperformed spectacularly in those areas.
And so, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to be understanding in terms of like, this could have happened to any mayor, under any mayor. But he can't say he was caught unawares because he ran on this in 2017. I agree with you, Jason. Like this was on his radar screen. This was basically one of his primary campaign themes. And so how do you not hold him responsible?
Exactly.
Taylor, you have top issues?
Uh, I think obviously public safety, the police, uh, the charter issue, that's a big one. And then housing, I think, just because another thing that Jacob ran on in 2017 was that he was going to end homelessness. And obviously that's not happening. Um, the encampments just keep getting closed, people being shuffled around. And he's not leaning on that either. Uh, so that's one of the top issues is getting some kind of better solution than what's happening right now.
So are we going to start with the big one? Are we starting with mayor? It sounds like you both want to talk about the mayor.
We do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Jason, do you have endorsements for mayor? Do you have anti endorsements for mayor?
I have, yes, one of each. So for the mayoral race, I am endorsing Sheila Najad. Um, I have a ton of respect for her advocacy work and activism. Um, her positions on the issues of community safety and citizen first policies are a major reason why. I also, you know, prefer Kate Knuth over Jacob. And honestly, at this point, I would rank Philip Sturm ahead of Jacob. So my hypothetical ballot would be Sheila number one, Kate number two, Philip number three, and nothing for Jacob. Which is of course my anti endorsement. Um, please, please, please do not vote for Jacob. Do not rank him anywhere on your ballot. I've talked to him and I've pestered him online so that other people don't have to. And I'm asking you to never vote for him again after what he has done and not done for the city.
Taylor?
Uh, my endorsement topic obviously is Sheila as well. Um, I was really impressed with her. I went straight to her endorsements page on her website and it's full of just like people throughout Minneapolis, random community members endorsing her. Uh, so I just thought that was a really interesting way of like sourcing your endorsements as opposed to like other politicians. Um, she seems great. Uh, and then other politicians. Um, she seems great. Uh, and then that is, that Jarrell Perry, is he still running?
I, so I think I followed the link on David Brower spreadsheet and it's just like a Facebook post, which seems like a weird basis to say that someone's a candidate, because I could tweet that I'm a candidate. Doesn't mean I'm a candidate. Like if somebody doesn't register a campaign committee or have a website, they're not a real candidate.
He does have a website.
Oh, he does?
I think it's like Perry for the number four, the people. Um, yeah. He, but he, you know, he, he wants a fully staffed MPD. That was his like top thing. He wants like full 888 officers or whatever it is.
Well, I'm gonna weasel out on this one. I don't have, I have an anti endorsement. I don't really have an endorsement. Obviously, I'm, I'm disappointed with the mayor's performance on public safety over the last term. So anti endorsement. And I'm keeping an open mind. I like that we have choices. Sorry.
Well, let me ask you, John, uh, this is something that Taylor and I were talking about earlier. And you and I touched on briefly during our, our last podcast together. What do you see as the, the coalition of voters that Jacob has? Because it's really difficult to find people who are supportive of him, I think.
Isn't it? I, I feel like he still has some defenders. So he's definitely got the business community. I think Southwest Minneapolis was kinda lukewarm on him with the 2040 rezoning stuff. They didn't like that. And he was seen as kind of an avatar of those changes, even though I wouldn't give him a ton of credit on that. So you kinda maybe got a bad rap from Southwest on being, being the, the pro housing yimby type. I think, I mean, the law and order crowd is definitely pleased with him. I think he's, I remember thinking after in the summer last year where people were writing him off. But you shouldn't be writing him off because he could very easily win. I still think he could very easily win. Like, it's not a foregone conclusion. If we had a lady mayor, of course, she'd be done. She'd be, you know, she'd be on Fox News getting attacked every single day. Should be an avatar of liberal Minneapolis out of control. But I, I think he's got a shot.
I feel like that he has been that though. He, you know, he tangled with Trump prior to all of this and he, you know, was a joke on Fox News. He's been used in a lot of corners, um, as that, you know, sort of whipping boy for the, the real law and order guns in every house crowd.
I don't know. I don't know if, I don't know if he's much of a, a whipping boy on Fox News and conservative media as he could be. Taylor, do you have any thoughts?
He definitely was, um, in the summer, I, one bad thing about me is I read the Daily Mail every single day. So that's where I see a lot of bad headlines. And so I got to see how they were like following the George Floyd murder and then how they were covering Jacob. And he, he was definitely like, for a while, like, you know, into June mocked pretty heavily by them. But then at the same time, they would like support him in another way. Like they couldn't make up their minds. Either it was like, you know, they wanted to support him for being like tough on crime and then they wanted to like make fun of him for the way he looked basically, just like, yeah, they, it, it was ran the gamut of support on the Daily Mail for him. But he was definitely like made fun of for a while.
And one of the things you hear from the law and order people who just want more cops and nothing else is that Frye has defunded police, not as much as the council would have. So it's like the council has not deprived him of officers in any way. They're both, they're both defunding. It's like this theory that a crime surge was driven by some action of politicians is just bogus.
Yeah, that's laughable.
MPD blew up themselves. And that's how I remember 2020.
Yeah. Yeah. What, what's the phrase, giving them just enough rope to hang themselves?
Yeah. Are we done with mayor? Do we have any closing thoughts?
Please don't vote for Jacob.
Yeah, don't vote for Jacob.
Okay, I, I concur. Oh, you know what? I forgot to play the theme song as we introduce candidates. Jason, do you want to go through the mayoral candidates with, with the, uh, sporty theme song? Do you have the list?
Um, yeah, let me just get that pulled up here and I'd be happy to, uh,
And then I can reinsert this part before the segment. So it looks like we didn't forget.
All right, I am ready.
Okay, I'm gonna play the music and then you're gonna read the candidates. It might be too loud. I don't know how this is gonna sound.
All right, first we have your incumbent, Jacob Frye. Facing challengers, Sheila Najad, Jarrell Perry, Kate Canute, and Philip Stern.
That's great. We're gonna have you do every race, Jason. Is that okay? I thought we would trade off, but I think you're our announcer.
All right.
I love that music.
Yeah, that's great.
So we're going to Ward One and that means I get to play the theme song again. Are you ready? Do you have the list, Jason?
Um, just give me one moment to get back to the top of the list.
Okay.
All right.
Wait for the music and then go.
Your incumbent, Kevin Reich. Facing challengers, Tully Klein and Elliot Payne.
Okay, who won? Taylor, do you have any thoughts on this one? Ward One is easy to forget about because it's all the way up there in the northeast part of the city where nothing happens, the buses don't go. What do you think?
That's how I felt reading honestly Kevin Reich's website. Uh, I read his basically entire issues page and it just felt like I read nothing.
Yeah, so that's, that's how I felt watching Kevin Reich for however long I've been watching the city council.
A lot of words. He said a lot of stuff, but it just boiled down to like nothing. It was almost impressive.
I'm impressed that you read, you prepared for this episode.
I am too.
Pretty, you sent a pretty sternly worded message to us, telling us that we hadn't prepared.
I felt like I was making it clear that I have no power to enforce my rules.
Taylor made a really great graphic for, uh, the Kevin Reich campaign. Um, hopefully in post, you can edit that in and have it come up here on the YouTube feed.
Dump that into the Google Doc and I will insert it.
Excellent. And so, uh, Tully, Tully Klein, do we have any thoughts on Tully Klein?
Yes. Uh, he has a very interesting medium.com profile. Uh, one of the articles I was reading today was, and this wasn't even that old, but it was basically about how he was watching the movie Dumb and Dumber and coming up with these inventions and like these sketches. And one of them was like a shoe taser or like
Shoe taser?
Yeah, or like a shampoo and a brush mixed together. It was just like pages of these like detailed drawings of these inventions.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I feel like we've unearthed something about this candidate.
He also used to play football for Wayzetta. That's another thing I unearthed, but the inventions were just truly a wild ride.
My thoughts about Tully Klein is that he has the name of a fictional presidential candidate in a movie about the 1950s. That's what I think.
Yeah, it, it's really an outstanding name.
Do you have thoughts about Tully Klein or Kevin Reich?
Um, you know, I, I looked at Tully Klein's page and, you know, he is a, he got a degree in communications from the U. Um, he has a lot of policies around green energy and things like that. Um, so you know, I think he is, he seems like a younger candidate who's been kind of activated recently with some of the more progressive issues. I don't see that he has a lot of experience. Um, I'm not sure that this is really the race for him to jump into. But at this point, I would definitely rank him higher than Kevin Reich.
Okay, so let's get on to the candidate I think we're all gonna endorse, which is Elliot Payne.
Yeah, which is also a really great name for like a fictional character, like a star quarterback in some sort of high school sports movie.
He brings the pain, right? That's what you're saying.
Exactly.
I spoke with Elliot on, when did I speak with him? I don't know. The episode came out this week. You can listen to it. Really smart guy. He's worked at the city, very policy oriented. I like him. He inspires confidence. Uh, it's gonna be close in Ward One, so get involved if you live in Northeast Minneapolis.
Yeah, and he was spot on with his best restaurant in Northeast recommendation.
That's true. Peggy Sue really grilled him on that one.
What was the choice?
See what you did there.
It was, uh, Chimborazo, which I've never heard of.
What? Oh, you, you are missing out on one of the true gems of food in this city.
Like I said, if you take a bus to Northeast, you'll never find a bus to bring you back.
But you might find a scooter.
It's true. We're, we're getting into scooter and bike share season, so I will no longer be trapped in the wedge. Are we ready for Ward Two?
Ward Two, yes. Um, so Ward Two, your incumbent is Cam Gordon from the Green. He's facing challenges from Tom Anderson and Robin Wensley-Worlebaugh, who is running as a socialist and is seeking the DSA endorsement.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Who wants to start us off?
I'll go. I, I think this is a really interesting race in that probably the two lead candidates aren't even gonna be seeking the DFL endorsement at the upcoming caucuses. Obviously Cam isn't and, um, Robin is not. So I know that there is also another candidate that I forgot to mention earlier, uh, Yusra Arab, who is seeking the DFL endorsement, um, against Tom Anderson. So it's a really interesting dynamic of what our city politics could look like in the future as people try to move away from necessarily the one DFL party and try to find other parties to more closely mirror their, their actual policies.
And Cam Gordon and Robin are both seeking the DSA endorsement.
Right. So you're gonna have to do a whole new, um, deep dive into what it's like for DSA candidates.
We're gonna have to bone up on DSA rules.
Yeah. But I guess given these, the slate of candidates, I would be ranking Robin number one. Um, I really like her as an activist and where she's coming from in terms of her policies. I think Cam is a really strong number two. He's done a lot of really great, um, things on city council. You know, he is real, as the only non DFLer in the city council for a long time. It's, um, really tough for him, I imagine. But, um, you know, I think that it's always exciting to get some new blood into the seats and especially when we're looking at this short, um, term. It's gonna be really important to have people who can stay true to their vision and really kind of move the ball forward, to use a sports analogy.
Taylor?
Yeah, I'm kinda with Jason on this. Um, I think it'd be interesting to see, uh, my endorsement go to Robin. Um, be interesting to see a DSA candidate in office there to see what they can do, um, and what that's like. Um, other than that, it's going with Cam.
Okay. Well, I really like Cam Gordon. I think he has been a voice in the wilderness on police issues going back a long time. Like, he's been the one focused on these issues. He's an ally on, on transportation. Like, if you wanna, you wanna fix a street, Cam will be with you on that. He's, he's behind the single room occupancy legalization. He's standing up for eliminating parking minimums this year, implementing some of those 2040 plan things. Just, I have to go with Cam on this one.
Now, are, are you more of a Cam fan or more of a Robin Garwood fan?
Uh, I'm gonna say both. I do like Robin Garwood. I, I'm impressed with the entire Ward Two office. Because even before I was a guy with a podcast, if you contact the Ward Two office, I live in Ward Ten. But if you contact the Ward Two office, they're gonna get back, back to you. And like, they actually care about what I care about. So that, that has felt good as a resident of Minneapolis.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's, it's interesting in Ward Two to have that problem of, you know, how do I rank more than one really good candidate? You know, we'll talk about the word that Lyndale is in in a bit and talk about how there's definitely an opposite problem going on. But I think that we should also, you know, make a note of our anti endorsement of Tom Anderson.
Why, why do we not like Tom Anderson, Jason? Cause I'm not clear.
Well, I mean, one, the big thing is that he is from Tom Hoke's, uh, li- list of candidates.
The Tom Hoke slate, of course.
Yeah. Um, so that should tell you all you need to know. But also like, I, the name Tom Anderson, that's the, uh, proto Hank Hill neighbor from Beavis and Butthead, um, from many years ago. And I thought that maybe there is a possible connection to Carol Becker because there is a whole episode of Beavis and Butthead called Mr. Anderson's Balls.
Okay. All right. I don't think many people are gonna get these references, Jason. We have a young audience.
That's fine. They don't have the balls to stop me from making them.
I, I didn't load the ball sound. Maybe I can find the ball sound.
Yeah, I had to Google that reference when I saw it.
Say, saying the ball sound. I don't, I don't like that.
Here it comes.
And none of you have the balls to stop this. I'm looking at all you in the eye. None of you have the balls to stop this. You guys could have the balls to stop this. I'm asking you guys, have the balls. We need something different. Have the balls.
Okay. Are we ready for Ward Three? This is gonna be a fun one. I feel like there's 13 wards and this is gonna be a really boring episode, but we're, we're hitting the, the high points here with Ward Three, I think.
I hope. I mean, Ward Three is definitely one of the, the more fun ones for, for these endorsements.
Your incumbent, Mr. Steve Fletcher. Facing challengers, Michael Rainville and Merv Morehead.
That was great, Jason. You're doing a good job with this. So what do we think? Who, who do we want to talk about first?
I mean, uh, should we just go and, you know, say that we have a unanimous endorsement of Fletcher?
Absolutely Steve Fletcher. Yeah.
Steve has, and has done a lot of really great work over the past term, uh, much better than his predecessor. So yeah, happily unanimously endorsing Steve Fletcher, especially against these other two characters.
Yeah. And should we talk about Michael Rainville? Cause he is so much fun. Barb's cousin, right? Is this Barb's cousin?
Yes. I would love it if you, you'd tell us a little bit about the background of Michael Rainville and how he has come to run for office here.
Well, I don't know Michael Rainville's background other than he's Barb's cousin. I do, I do know that he, uh, he once intervened on behalf of a cop who was getting beat up. I don't, I don't know if I can do the story justice. Can either of you narrate this story? Just read it.
I actually don't have that story.
I don't either.
Okay.
I thought that you were gonna really lean into that.
Okay, let me, let me clear my throat and read this AP story from 2011 describing a 1995 incident involving Michael Rainville. As he drove around Northeast Minneapolis with his pregnant wife, Michael Rainville wondered if starting his family there made him a bad husband. At the time, in 1995, the city's all time high of 99 murders had earned it the nickname At the time, in 1995, the city's all time high of 99 murders had earned it the nickname Murderopolis. Through the window of his car, Rainville suddenly saw a 300 pound man knocking the hell out of a police officer. As he pulled over to help, his wife turned to him. "No," she said, "we're going home and we're going to find a house in the suburbs." Rainville, a fifth generation resident of Northeast, stopped the car and helped the officer. He and his family decided to stay. Since then, Minneapolis has lost its damning nickname and Northeast in particular has seen significant growth. According to Rainville, the artists in the community can be thanked for that. I, I think we'll end it there. Were you both touched by that crime story?
Yeah.
It's, it's really impressive that he let that story go to press when it makes his wife seem like kind of a villain.
Right, yeah. He threw his wife under the bus in that story.
Yeah, I mean, she is clearly not from here.
So that story has Murderopolis. It has a 300 pound man beating up a police officer. It has Michael Rainville saving the day. It has everything. Do we think it's true, though? Do we think the story is true? Did Michael Rainville really save a cop from a 300 pound man?
Absolutely not.
Yeah, I, I would be interested to figure out what kernel of that is true. I believe it to be the part where his wife said that they were going home and moving to the suburbs. And if anything, maybe he pulled over and called 911.
Okay, we don't believe Michael Rainville.
No.
Okay. And I, I feel like electing Michael Rainville, you might as well be electing a Republican because, I mean, that's, that's, that's the Rainville way. There were 50 years, the Rainville family in charge of Ward four. Barb has gone on to a career of endorsing Republicans for county commissioner. So we don't, we don't need to put another Rainville style conservative on the city council. We're not doing it. Jason, do you have any, do you have any thoughts about Merv Moorhead besides what an unusual name that is?
Yeah, I mean, obviously with a name like Merv Moorhead, I had to find out more about him. So just taking a, a basic look at, you know, the fact that he is endorsed by Tom Hoke, I immediately presumed that he was a Republican running under the DFL banner and sure enough, if you look at his Facebook likes, uh, they include Mitt Romney, uh, the Minnesota GOP, um, Paul Ryan, Senator Mitt Romney, so he's liked Mitt Romney twice, and uh, the incredibly racist Minneapolis Crime Watch Group.
Okay, Merv Moorhead, Merv Moorhead has liked Mitt Romney twice, but Mitt Romney is good now, right? We like him. No, we don't, okay.
No, we don't.
Yeah, and honestly, I think the name Merv Moorhead sounds like a seventies adult film actor. So really, he should not be even listed on a ballot at this point.
Yeah, and I, I wonder if Merv Moorhead had met Michael Rainville, cause I think those guys would like each other. And not, not compete for votes.
What do you suppose that dynamic would be like? Like, are they just trying to uh, flood the ranked choice voting against Steve Fletcher?
I don't think there's a strategy. I think there's a lot of people running for office this year who don't know what they're doing and don't know that anyone else is running. They're like, of course, it's gonna be me. So
Fair enough.
I think that's what's happening. Are we ready for Ward four?
Uh, yes, let's do it.
In Ward four, your incumbent, Philippe Cunningham, running against a slate of challengers including Becca Thompson, Latricia Vito, and Leslie Davis.
We have to eliminate Leslie Davis right off the bat because I get daily emails into my spam with like vaccine conspiracies from him. I don't know how he found my email address, why I'm on the list, but no to Leslie Davis.
Oh, he has a really interesting website.
Okay, do you, do you have thoughts?
Yeah, I, wow. Uh, he has a website called earthprotector.org. It's just probably all the conspiracies he emails you about, but they're like collected in one page. It's got like, you know, fluoride, chemtrails, 5G sickness. Um, he had, obviously he's against masks, he's against the vaccine. He lists Tim Walz and like all the state officials as enemies of the state. It's intense.
Yeah.
But it's interesting.
Leslie Davis is intense.
Leslie Davis, Earth Protector.
Jason, do you have thoughts on the other candidates?
Um, wow, I'm still kind of reeling from the uh, the Leslie Davis reveal. Um, I guess, you know, I, I, we should definitely call out that Becca Thompson and Latricia Vito were both part of the Tom Hoke slate. So that's, that's a no.
It's a red flag.
Yeah, I was going to anti endorse Becca Thompson. I don't know if you all remember this, but she made a blog post um, pointing to her heritage of being one quarter Sami, which is uh, the indigenous people in Scandinavian countries and Russia, which are recognized as being ethnic minorities there. Um, but in pointing to that, uh, she made the statement, "I hope that one day we can go beyond identity politics to governance of apt leaders whose only litmus of success is their skill and vision for the future." So I think for, you know, a white woman to, to make that kind of statement is pretty suspect.
And uh, another, another blog post of hers recently, Philippe Cunningham put out this handbook that I think he wrote with one other person um, about community response to like a public safety crisis like we had last summer. Like, you've got white supremacists coming into North Minneapolis, buildings are on fire. How does the community band together and organize? Really basic handbook. And it doesn't include anything about armed patrols. Becca Thompson wanted to turn it into this like neighborhood watch armed patrol issue. And then at the end of this blog post, like described a situation and basically reenacted the Trayvon Martin murder in this blog post and blamed Philippe Cunningham for this fictional murder of Trayvon Martin. Like using the names George and Trayvon in this blog post. Very bizarre. Not a candidate to be taken seriously.
No. But I think, you know, that does give us the opportunity to uh, once again unanimously endorse Philippe for Ward four.
Yeah, I like Philippe. He's been good.
Me too. Tell your book club.
Your tweet, Councilman Cunningham. You wrote, "Spread the word to your book club. I don't belong to a book club."
And are, are we gonna say anything about Latricia?
I mean, uh, we mentioned that Latricia is Tom Hoke endorsed. I think that's about where we need to be with that.
So I don't have any, I don't have any ill will for Latricia and just like, this is a pro Philippe endorsement here. I think he's done a good job.
Absolutely.
Here comes the theme song.
In Ward five, your incumbent Jeremiah Ellison, running against Victor Martinez, Kathy Spann, and Crystal Porter, with Elijah Norris Holliday and Suliman Issa running as well.
Very good. I, I'll start off and say I'm endorsing Jeremiah Ellison. That's, that's what I have to say.
Yeah. Taylor?
Yep, Jeremiah Ellison, supporting him. I think he's been great.
Yeah, um, I used to live in Ward five. Um, I caucused for Jeremiah Ellison in 2017, uh, when he was running against Long Yang. Um, there's a name for, for you to bring back the past, John. It seems like Jeremiah is constantly getting challenged by conservatives and probably always will be. I noticed that, you know, Tom Hoke is supporting candidates against him and if Tom Hoke really wanted uh, quote unquote, artist-led communication, he'd support Jeremiah. But clearly Tom Hoke just wants to support the status quo and not make any substantive changes that might, you know, cause discomfort to him and his friends around the lakes.
I've been really impressed with Ellison over the last four years. I didn't know much about him coming in, but he's been a really good council member, really strong and clear voice on public safety. I like Jeremiah Ellison.
Me too.
Ready for the next one?
Well, um, I do have an anti endorsement.
Go, do it.
I am anti endorsing Victor Martinez.
Wait, do you want me to play the theme song before you do it?
No, that's fine.
You sure? I'm gonna do it anyway.
My anti endorsement, Victor Martinez.
I feel like you're just doing this to make me use that voice. He, his website makes, you know, some very vague policies, policy statements around like uplifting the community and valuing our youth and things like that. Um, he points out that he's been a North Side resident for 17 years. However, one of the, the big red flags for me is that he is supporting, he makes a, a point of saying that he supports our first African American police chief. Uh, if there is a police chief in the nation that is capable of bringing meaningful reform to the MPD, it's Chief Rondo. Uh, and we need council members that are not interested in making the national headlines every other week. So he's kind of taking a dig at the existing city council and clearly, you know, talking about how he supports police. The other thing about Victor Martinez is he is a pastor. He is a pastor of the New Generation Church in North Minneapolis. They're an Assemblies of God affiliate. Uh, they're a very conservative and evangelical church. They have positions such as homosexual behavior is a sin. The Assemblies of God views the practice of abortion as an evil that has been inflicted upon millions of innocent babies. And they view hell as a literal thing, uh, and the punishment of the wicked has no end. So uh, I question whether somebody who carries these views can be a fair uh, representative of their constituents. And I'll also mention, you know, Kathy Spann, who was also endorsed by Tom Hoke.
Yeah, you know whose judgment I question is Tom Hoke for endorsing Victor Martinez. That's what I question.
Yeah, I agree. And you know, it's something that, it's kind of painful for me because I, you know, growing up as a Latinx person in a small town, I used to really look forward to this day when I would, you know, see Latino and Latina and Latinx candidates at all different levels. Um, and you know, I looked forward to that my whole life and then, you know, after the 2016 uh, GOP primary, I was like, I take it all back. If we're gonna have Marco Rubio and Ted Cruz as our representation for these national seats, I don't, I don't, I don't want it. It's fine. And it's kind of how I feel about Victor Martinez. It's disappointing um, to me as somebody who has seen the struggle of Latinx people in America to see him leading with, you know, and certainly he doesn't mention those sorts of views on his, his campaign website. But knowing that that's what his church represents, um, it's very difficult for me to feel anything other than frustration that he is running.
Well said, Jason. Are we ready for Ward six?
Uh, this one's gonna be a real short one, so I hope your, uh, your finger is ready.
The important part is I get to play the theme song.
All right. In Ward six, running unopposed, your special election incumbent, Jamal Osman.
Okay, I'm not endorsing Jamal Osman, but I have no one to endorse in his stead, so.
Yeah, I mean.
Can we move on?
Yeah, Tom Hoke, Tom Hoke endorsed him, so we are, we're just gonna have to anti endorse and move on.
Tom has picked a winner. We're moving on to
Do you think that maybe that's why? All right. I, I was gonna say maybe that's why he picked Jamal was just to uh, make sure that one person that he was backing won.
And Tom Hoke trying to pad his stats, right?
Yeah.
In Ward seven, incumbent Lisa Goodman is running against Nick Corr, Kenze Ida, and, oh, that's it. I thought we had one more.
I, I'm endorsing Nick Corr. Simple as that. He's running a strong campaign, raising a bunch of money, shares my values. He'll be a good council member. Lisa Goodman has not been a good council member. Let's move on from the Goodman era. I'm going to Taylor for the first comment because Taylor is in Ward seven.
Yes. Uh, obviously endorsing Nick Corr. Um, he seems great. You know, he's just really strong so far and hopefully, like, it's feeling like, you know, in the last couple of years, just a lot of new apartments have gone up on, like even just on Nicolleton 14th or on 15th that is bringing more renters into the neighborhood. And I'm hoping that somehow a tide can turn from Lisa Goodman winning, you know, based on her base in the lakes versus, you know, Loring and Stevens Square and Loring Heights being more renter. So I'm, yeah.
Lisa Goodman has benefited for a long time on being able to ignore the downtown resident portion of her ward, simply relying on the Lakes area homeowners. Jason?
Yeah, I am also endorsing Nick Corr. Um, Taylor brought him to my attention when he first announced. I've been really impressed with his campaign and his stance on the policies that I think are really important. Um, I agree, you know, the, the Lisa Goodman era has been not great for people who aren't wealthy white homeowners. And I think it's time to move on and really represent more of the city than just those people.
Okay, we're going to Ward eight.
In Ward eight, your incumbent Andrea Jenkins, running unopposed.
Okay, are we ready for Ward nine?
Um, yeah, if, if there's anybody else.
Hold on, sorry.
If there's anybody else who runs against Andrea Jenkins, you probably vote for them, but, you know, we'll see.
In Ward nine, the incumbent, Olondro Tano, is not seeking reelection. That leaves challengers Rita Ortega, Jason Chavez, Al Flowers Jr., Carmen Neans, and Mickey Moore, running for the seat.
I just got off a landlord Zoom call where Mickey Moore was answering questions. I, I'm not a fan of Mickey Moore. I think he, he ran for Congress recently and just like immediately transitioned into running to, for city council. He sends me weird tweets, weird quote tweets.
Really?
I think he's just, he's trying to get his name out there. They, they don't make sense. Like he says these things that don't make sense. I don't have specific examples. I'm not paying much attention to Mickey Moore, but I, I don't like the campaign.
Well, you know what you should be paying attention to with Mickey Moore?
What's that?
He is Tom Hoke endorsed, along with Al Flowers Jr.
You know, I'm embarrassed, I'm embarrassed for Tom Hoke and how many just weirdo, weirdo goofball candidates he's endorsed. You're not doing the brand any favors, Tom.
Yeah, I mean, I, I will say this, uh, Mickey Moore does claim on his campaign website, which is just a terrible, terrible website, to have created the professional hair braiding industry in Minnesota.
Oh, really?
Yes. I have no idea what, what credentials he has to make that claim, but he, he's got it out there.
It's, it started to rain here on the wedge. Is it raining where you guys are?
Uh, I saw a flash of lightning, but I can't quite tell if it's raining yet.
I can't see outdoors.
Jason, we've outsourced Ward nine to you. You were the only one on this podcast with the credibility to talk about the Ward nine candidates.
Well, I mean, I, I used to live in Ward nine. Um, that's, that's true and I, it's always had a special place in my heart. So um, I think it's one of the two most fascinating races. You know, without You know, without Alondra Kano returning, there are a lot of people looking for that seat. I personally like Rita Ortega and Jason Chavez. Both have strong stances on issues like police accountability, which is probably the core issue. And that's probably the issue that would have sunk Alondra in this coming election in Ward Nine. So it's kind, to me, again, it's kind of a bummer that this is like the, the Latinx seat on the council lately. Because, you know, there are Latinx people all over the city that also deserve representation. But both of these candidates are, are really strong. And I think that whether you, you know, rank them one or two, they're, they're gonna do well, especially when you look at the fact that Tom Hoke endorsed two candidates in this race. Again, Mickey Moore and Al Flowers Jr.
So Jason, maybe you can answer this, maybe you can't. Where does Rita Ortega diverge from Alondra?
I think that.
Because, because just for context, she worked in the Ward Nine office.
Yes. I feel like, you know, when Alondra first ran and was elected, she ran on some pretty strong progressive principles that I found very admirable. She was my council member when I lived in Ward Nine. And I had a pretty good relationship with her. I appreciated her stance on a lot of issues. It's really been over the past, the past couple of years where Alondra really started to follow Jacob's lead on a lot of things that I felt she had fallen away from that message. And I think Rita, as a newcomer, is gonna stick more closely to those values of police accountability and things like that. I will say that Jason Chavez was endorsed by our good friends over at Take Action Minnesota, which is, I think, a pretty strong endorsement for him as a progressive candidate.
Yeah. Taylor, do you have thoughts on Ward Nine?
No.
Okay, we can go to Ward Ten. You ready?
In Ward Ten, your incumbent Lisa Bender is also not seeking reelection. That leaves challengers Alicia Gibson, Katie Jones, Chris Parsons, Aisha Chukai, and David Wheeler.
Okay, this is the wedge. This is my home ward. I feel like I have so much to say. But I don't know if I'm gonna get to it all. First, I, I listened to Chris Parsons on the landlord Zoom call. He's definitely the most conservative candidate in Ward Ten. I just heard you open a soda.
Oh, wow. It really picked that up.
I'm gonna take a drink of water.
Also, I'm gonna point out that Taylor is wearing a Wedge Live t-shirt.
That's right.
Let's see.
Um, dark money.
Oh, that's good.
I'm a six, six, six supporter.
Thank you, Taylor.
Thank you.
So Chris Parsons is the most conservative candidate. You know, he's against, he's against just cause eviction protections. What is going on with this guy? He's against the Public Safety Charter Amendment. He's against the Rent Control Charter Amendment. He is against bike lanes. I just, he does not share my values in any way. I don't think he's viable. He's the candidate you love to hate in Ward Ten. Definitely don't rank him. No, not at all. Alicia Gibson, I also am not a fan of. Funny story about her. She was writing letters to the Planning Commission opposing an apartment building, like the small 10-unit apartment building on Bryan Avenue, before she even lived in the wedge, before she lived in Minneapolis. Like she had acquired, acquired a home and hadn't moved in yet, but was already writing letters to the Planning Commission. That's a red flag.
Wow.
In, in addition to just a number of other things that I'm not, not liking. Who else? David Wheeler, is that the guy's name? He's on the BET.
Yeah.
He's kind of fun. I enjoy watching him. He, he did this thing where he gave thumbs down. No, people were giving him a thumbs down and he scolded them at a candidate forum. He's like.
Please don't put your fingers like that. I, I think that's really very rude.
I like having David Wheeler around. I don't think he's running a campaign where he's trying to win. He's got a surprising number of like high-profile donors. Betsy Hodges donated to his campaign. Couple of other like elected or former elected officials. So he has collected favors over the years, I guess. But not a serious candidate. So who does that leave us with? Stephen J. Fritsch. I think he's running, is he running his DSA? I think.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I don't think he stands a chance. Don't have anything bad to say about the guy. I think your two front runners are Katie and Aisha. And I have endorsed Katie. I have known her for almost as long as I've lived in the wedge. Shares all my values. I think she would make an excellent council member. She is a really impressive person. She's kind of a person, if you have something big and important you want done, you trust Katie to do it. So I, I can't speak highly enough of her. And also, like, if it's Aisha, I like Aisha too. I, I'm just, most of all, I'm hoping that Ward Ten has a progressive council member come 2022, so. Endorsing Katie. Jason, you may disagree. Go.
Yeah, my endorsement goes to Aisha. I've been following her work for a while now. I'm very impressed with her as an activist and an organizer. I think she, you know, has a really great background to speak for a lot of the diversity in Ward Ten, which I think can be kind of forgotten. Ward Ten is one of the most diverse wards in the city. But, you know, there tends to be a lot of focus on, you know, the, the white folks in Uptown. No offense, John. And I think it would be refreshing to see a different voice there. But I also like Katie. I think that both of them are running good campaigns. And, you know, having them ranked one and two on your ballot is, is a, a great place to be in.
Taylor, do you have any thoughts about the ward to yourself?
No, I'm honestly not that familiar with Ward Ten.
Okay.
I, I should have brushed up on it.
Well, I had it covered. I live in Ward Ten. You knew I would have it covered.
That's right.
Yeah. Once you, once you cross over or under the bridge, Taylor just doesn't care.
You know, we're an hour, an hour and 17 minutes. This is gonna be a really long podcast, but I think it's going well. People are gonna love it.
They better.
We ready for Ward Eleven?
Yeah, let's go for it.
Yeah.
In Ward Eleven, your incumbent is Jeremy Schrader, or Schroder, depending on where you're from. Also facing Dylan Gerner, Emily Kosky, and no one else in Ward Eleven.
I think this is an easy one. I'm endorsing Jeremy Schrader. He has, as I said in my written endorsement on WedgeLive.com, he could have just not done anything, not said anything, not led on anything and cruised to reelection. Just reelect me. I didn't do anything. I kept everything the same in Ward Eleven. Reelect me. And, you know, he would have run unopposed this year. But he's led on public safety. He has, he has led on a lot of 2040 plan issues, his chair of the zoning and planning committee. I think he's good on transportation. So he is an ally on the things that are important to me, so I'm endorsing Jeremy Schrader. Taylor?
I'm endorsing Jeremy Schroder. I don't know if we have some kind of idea of how he pronounces it, but I would leave it to be Schroder. No, he just seems good. Honestly, I was not that familiar with him. His name was kind of new to me up until a couple of weeks ago when I started doing research.
If you watch, if you watch the Elliot Payne episode of the Wedge Live podcast on YouTube, you will see a narrated Jeremy Schrader tweet with chickens and laundry. So check that out.
Well, gotta check that out. Yeah.
Jason?
Um, yeah, I'm also endorsing Jeremy. Like you said, he could have easily just kept his head down. I respect the fact that he voted against the appropriation of additional funds for MPD last fall. It seemed like for him in Ward Eleven, it would be really easy for him to have voted the other way. You know, the way that Alondra and Andrea did. But he didn't, and I respect that.
Yeah, so the big issue in the budget debate, which should not have been a big issue, was all these imaginary police officers that we were never gonna have this year, but the mayor wanted them on paper.
Right.
I hated how dumb that debate was.
Yeah, it was ridiculous.
We, we can wait to decide how many officers we need. Once the time comes when we actually have the money and like the capacity to train them, which we don't. They're training officers as fast as they can. Are we ready for Ward Twelve?
Uh, did you want to mention anything about Emily Kosky?
Oh, right. Yeah, I think I do. I was, I was watching her Zoom announcement video on YouTube. And she told a crime story, which which is a little similar to the experience I had with Michael Rainville finding his crime story from 1995. Only hers is far less dramatic. Let's mention that Emily Kosky is a Hoff Steed. Is it Hoff Steed or Hoffstead? I haven't lived in Minneapolis long enough to know.
I think Hoffstead.
Hoffstead. So she's from a famous political family. And her, her dramatic crime story was waking up one morning and checking her phone and finding a crime notification from half a mile away.
I opened the app and saw that the area they were securing was in the direction that I always walk. I know. I'm not alone in this experience.
Wow. Yeah, that was the emotional moment at the, at the Zoom announcement.
That's like pulled, pulled right from next door.
Yeah, so I'm not a fan. She will be a conservative council member.
Sure.
So don't go there. Ward Twelve.
In Ward Twelve, returning as incumbent, Andrew Johnson, being challenged by Willie Lee, Brianna Thul, and theoretically Nancy Moore.
I didn't know any, hardly any of those people were running, except for Willie Lee, the, the, uh, the one who likes pizza.
Yeah, very pro pizza. He.
He's got a great website.
Yes. He is a, a single-issue candidate. He is all, it seems like he's only running to push Andrew to the left after he vote, voted for those additional funds availability for MPD. His only issue is defunding the MPD. I kind of wish that he lived in Ward Eight because could definitely use that energy there with Andrea Jenkins.
So I like that that's the way you put it. He's running to push Andrew to the left. He doesn't appear to be running to win, so. You're, you're doing good work, Willie. We don't think you can win. Therefore, nobody's going out on a limb to endorse you. You're not getting the Wedge Live endorsement.
He tweeted photos of his cats at you, though. He was really kinda.
He pandered hard for it, but he's not getting it.
No, I mean, it's a valiant effort. He, he knows your interests.
Yeah. I enjoy pizza too.
Yeah, pizza and cats. Who, who doesn't love pizza and cats?
So are either of you willing to risk your reputation to endorse against Andrew Johnson?
I am, actually.
Sure.
Go, Jason.
Yeah, so I am endorsing Brianna. She, you know, makes some really interesting statements on her policies. You know, she says things like, we must transition from a city planned and designed around cars to one centered around pedestrian traffic, public transit, and biking. She talks about increased worker protections, a $24 an hour living wage, universal basic income, and universal healthcare as being long overdue. Her main background comes from working in customer service and in education, which, you know, I think those are areas that are really underserved and underrepresented in city government. As somebody who works in retail, I definitely appreciate that as well. And she's also, you know, served on the Hale Page Diamond Lake Neighborhood Association. And much like you, John, she has tuned into hours worth of government meetings online, even staying up till 2:00 AM to listen to all of the public comments on public safety.
Oh, my God, I did that once.
Yeah.
Kindred spirits, right?
Absolutely. So, yeah, I urge all of you to check out Brianna and her website. I think that she is an exciting candidate. Her website is thul, T-H-U-L-L, four, F-O-R, twelve, one, two, dot org. So if you live in Ward Twelve, please take a look at her website and get involved with her campaign.
And Andrew Johnson, please lead. Please get off the fence. I was joking with someone recently about how Ward Twelve is West Virginia and he's Joe Manchin. How do you, how do you guys like that analogy?
Yeah, that's incredibly apt.
Okay.
So I, you know, I look at him as sort of the, if you're familiar with baseball, the Mendoza line. That's sort of like the, the line above which you are considered an acceptable baseball player and the line below which you're kind of not. And I feel like he's sort of the Mendoza line.
Of the city council.
City council.
Okay, that's, that's a good, good analogy, Jason. No one will get that reference. Taylor, how, how do you, how do you feel about Ward Twelve?
Uh, I also support that Brianna Thul. A lot of her, you know, the, the key issues that Jason was highlighting from her are just things that are all very important to me. I wish I could endorse Willie Lee. Because his website really, again, I can endorse his website because you go to it and it's just on the desktop. It's just a big pink screen and then it says, Willie Lee wants to defund the police. And then it's like pictures of him with like his cat and his bike. So I wish I could endorse him, but I'm gonna go with Brianna Thul.
Okay, I'm, I'm abstaining from this one because I need, I need proof of viability. Send me your fundraising numbers. Prove you can win.
You know, I, I'm just gonna take that and, you know, say that as a hyper-local journalist yourself, that many would have looked at years ago and said, you have to prove that you're viable here, John.
I'm still not viable. I'm not viable right at this moment. I'm not viable.
I, I think that, you know, the spirit of, of Wedge Live is really to support some underdogs. And, you know, share the stories of people that aren't being covered in your, your Star Tribune.
That's true.
Or your WCCO. So I think that you, you should be, you know, taking the advice that you're giving to Andrew Johnson and
It's true.
stepping off of the fence.
It's true. I am failing everyone right now, but I had you on the show to give that loving endorsement of Brianna, Brianna Thul in Ward Twelve. So I think I, I think you are fulfilling my duties on my behalf right now.
Oh, all right. I'll, I'll make sure that we take that out of the royalties for this episode.
And as we approach the 90-minute mark of this podcast, we're ready for the final ward, Ward Thirteen.
In Ward Thirteen, Southwest Minneapolis, your returning incumbent, Linnea Palmasano, and her central challenger, Mr. Mike Norton.
I don't know why I really accentuated the T in his last name, but.
It was good. It was, it was your announcer voice. Taylor, do you have any thoughts on Ward Thirteen?
Yeah, how, why is Mike Norton not accepting donations at all?
Uh, I mean, he's got that interesting thing where he's like, oh, give to these causes instead of donating to me and like, I can pay for it myself.
Yeah, that was just, that struck me as odd. And then his website has some line about like how he was used to bootstrapping it himself with his small business and so he doesn't need our money and his. That was kind of some off-putting language, but I mean, he's better than Linnea, so. I guess endorse him.
There's, there's some weirdness around asking people for money, I think, if you're like not a politician. It's like, it can feel weird asking for money, doing those fundraising phone calls to family and friends, please fund my campaign. I mean, if, if I didn't have to when I was running for office.
Yeah.
I, I would avoid, I would avoid that part of it if I could.
Yeah, you'd just try to make me do it.
Yeah. Yeah. Jason can send a hundred tweets an hour about how Wedge Live needs a podcast. Give, give today.
It was more that everybody else needs a Wedge Live podcast.
Right. Yeah. Cause we're, we're not doing this for my benefit. It's for the people.
That's right. We're providing a service. And yeah, I think that we're all kind of in agreement. We're endorsing Mike. Um, he's definitely more conservative than I would normally endorse, but when it's a choice between him and Linnea, it's a pretty easy one. Um, don't vote for Linnea.
And just, just to tell a recent ridiculous story about Palmasano, there was that, she wanted to substitute her idea instead of the Public Safety Charter Amendment. And her idea was to like, have the city clerk create a website duplicating what already exists of policies and procedures for MPD on the MPD's website. Like, why didn't you just vote against it? That's ridiculous.
Uh, do you think she knew what in actuality she was doing?
Yeah, she think, yeah, she knew. It's embarrassing. She's an embarrassment, Ward 13.
She is. I, you know, coming from the, the state of Wisconsin and looking at the state of their electoral politics, uh, you know, I've seen a lot of embarrassing candidates from Ron Johnson and Scott Walker to Paul Ryan. And I would say that for the city of Minneapolis, she's on, on a par with all of them as far as an embarrassment to the city.
And to set up the contrast between Palmasano and Mike Norton, he is for the Public Safety Charter Amendment. He is much more pro housing and zoning reform, which would bring housing to Ward 13. Palmasano was famously the only person to vote against the 2040 plan. And all this means that Mike Norton probably can't win because it's Ward 13, but you should support him anyway. Volunteer your time, but don't donate money because he's not accepting donations.
Yeah, if somebody comes to you and says they're collecting money for Mike Norton.
It's a scam. It's a scam. Yeah. That person is probably the meatjacker. They're up to no good.
Of course.
Did we, did we get to the end of our agenda?
I believe we did. We have hit all of the, the mayoral and all of the city council races. Um, we got to listen to some really exciting voicemails.
Right. Yeah. This was a good, this was a good show and I, I didn't know it would take 90 minutes. I don't know if either of you anticipated it might take 90 minutes.
No, and your outline was very ambitious with having the, the, all the park board candidates on there.
Oh, did I have all the park board candidates on there?
Uh, yeah, they're on there, but no one really had much to say about them. So.
Yeah, we could do the park board candidates sometime in the future.
Yeah.
Can we see, can we see your cat?
Yeah, hold on.
Taylor, Taylor's coming back with a cat.
And he was knocking things over when I was, oh. Here's Simon.
Oh, that's a nice cat. Look at that cat.
Isn't he cute? He's really big. See, he's
Wow, that is a large, that's a large cat.
He's very large.
What's, what's his name?
Just very small.
No, no, he's large.
What's his name?
Simon.
Simon. Simon ever get outside or is this purely a window cat?
Yeah, um, he does go out back. We have like just a back door that goes right outside and he goes and sits and usually eats whatever like weird green things are popping up between the cement cracks and then he pukes. That's like his favorite.
Well, that will happen to you in Loring Park if you're randomly eating things on the side.
It's true. You don't wanna do that.
Puke it up.
Yeah, who knows?
All right. I think we're, time for closing thoughts. Taylor, do you have closing thoughts? You don't have to.
Again, don't vote for Jacob Fry. That's my closing thought. Just, and bully him online. That's, I urge everyone to join in.
Both of you need to start respecting the office of the mayor.
We do. That's why we want him gone.
Okay.
We have the utmost respect for it.
Jason, closing thoughts?
Um, yeah, just to echo Taylor, don't vote for Jacob. Bully him online. Uh, it's a really exciting campaign season. There are a lot of young progressive candidates. Um, please find whatever way you can to support them.
Okay, should I play us out with our NBA on NBC theme song?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not sure if I have the rights to this. Let's get my podcast taken down.